Pledge and invocation, so Madam Clerk, if you will call the roll.
Councilman Gillespie.
Here.
Councilman Wood.
Here.
Councilman Argo.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Here.
Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Councilman Fink.
Here.
Okay. Now I'll call this meeting of the City Council to order. The character trait of the month is sensitivity, perceiving the true attitudes and emotions of those around me. I think it's fitting to note, adjacent to citing our character trait, that today is a special day. It's Pearl Harbor Day, the anniversary, and I think it warrants mentioning the sacrifices made by our veterans. And would ask that they be in our thoughts and prayers on this anniversary of Pearl Harbor Day. We now turn to the approval of the minutes we have before us, minutes from both the November 2nd and the November 16th council meetings. Gentlemen, you've seen those in advance and have had an opportunity to review them. Are there any comments, questions, or changes to the minutes from those two meetings? Councilman Renninger?
Chair up.
Motion to approve the minutes, do I hear a second? Seconded by Councilman Gillespie. All in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the minutes are approved. We now turn to the public portion of our meeting where we open the podium and the microphone up to any citizens who wish to come before the council. There's really not a limit on the topic that you can discuss. It doesn't have to be on the agenda. We ask that you come forth, state your name and address for the record, and I'll call on hands. Dr. Simmons?
Dr. Jerry Simmons, 141 North Chestnut Street here in Prattville. I wanted to discuss with you, you have a package that I've given you, and I also gave the city clerk a package to attach to the official minutes. What I wanted to talk about is something very important. It's a recent public hearing that was held on November 22nd for the Exchange Cooperative District. And this public hearing was to give opportunity for comment on a $5.6 million bond issue. In your package, you'll see Exhibit B1 with the legal notice. But basically, this package, this hearing was to finance the costs associated with the development of Exchange Retail Project. And the project is located in Prattville, Alabama. The remainder of the notice really didn't shed any more light. So lacking in detail, I went to the hearing to find out more, and also I had a list of questions. And the bond hearing officer, which is Mr. Robert Gilpin, was quick to point out that he would not answer any questions and that he simply read from a script. And then, it was only then that we learned that these bonds for the Kohl's Retail Project were basically a recovery zone facility bond to finance a project. And when we asked to speak, Mr. Gilpin reminded us that we could make comment, but we really couldn't ask any questions. And that was despite, there was a Prattville Progress article by Don Fletcher which quoted Dot Sanford. She's on the Exchange Commission. And it said that Mr. Gilpin would answer any questions. So they asked the three people who were in attendance to ask questions if they would want to speak, and two declined. And of course, I voiced my concern because of the fact that I didn't know much about the bond. I didn't know what the interest rate was. I didn't know what the yield or the term. The reason this is all of the concern is the bond is not an obligation of the city. So I want to make that clear. However, the bond is directly related to how much sales tax we're going to rebate back to the exchange. In an agreement, you may remember a resolution back in 2008 on page 38. By a vote of five to two, the council approved a Project K agreement. And based on this agreement, you may recall that Councilman Gillespie and Councilman Argo voted against this Project K agreement. And Councilman Wood made a recommendation that we cut the project cost down from nine million to 4.5. Councilman Miller seconded that motion, but that motion failed. So we're stuck with this agreement, and I'll talk a little bit more about it. But basically, we have an agreement for this $9 million. And this is based on the, what we call the Recovery, American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. And what that is, is that's an economic stimulus package that's designed to promote jobs and growth. And there's a lot of requirements to go along with having a hearing. And I've, we actually were offended that this hearing would not even address any of our questions. The, Mr. Gilpin said that the bonds were private activity bonds, and so as a result, he would not answer any questions. But the word "private" refers to the fact that these bonds are not governmental, not that we're not privy to any information. So we were quite concerned that we couldn't find out any information. In your package, if you look at Exhibit C, I prepared a bunch of questions for you that need to be known because this council is going to have to decide whether or not those bonds are what we call substantial public interest. That's an IRS requirement. If you're wondering why they held the hearing, in order for the bonds to be tax exempt under IRS Code 147-F, they had to hold a public hearing. So it wasn't like they were interested so much in what we had to say. They were trying to check a box. So you'll see the questions in Exhibit C. Now, Mr. Gilpin finally returned my call, and he was much more talkative today than he had been at the hearing. And you'll notice that he answered most of the questions. But the most important question that you as a council need to know is what is the yield going to be on the bond? The interest rate, the yield, and the term. And he said that he will not know that until they close on the bond. Well, that is true, that you don't determine the yield of a bond till it closes. But you know within what we call a few basis points what the bond is going to yield. And I think that he just didn't want to disclose that. And I'll explain why that's important in a minute. Now, if you look at your Exhibit B, that's a form that they either have sent or they will send to the mayor. And they are going to ask the mayor to sign that form saying that he approves of the bond. Now, that's an IRS requirement. So if you look at Exhibit B, you'll see down at the bottom, I've highlighted the last paragraph, which has some either false or misleading statements. Because in it, it says that basically that these bonds will not result in exemption of any tax or that the bonds are not creating an indirect obligation to the city, which is absolutely false. Because remember, as I'm going to cover, that your maximum amount that you owe in sales tax rebate is directly tied to the yield on the bond. So that's an important discrepancy. And then, it's real important also that that authority to approve these bonds or not approve the bonds, that should rest with you, the city council, not with the mayor. I spoke with Mr. Timothy Jones. He's the general counsel for the IRS regarding bonds. And he said that the approval authority for these bonds should be the same approval authority as was for Project K. So since the city council approved Project K, then it's up to you as a council to decide whether or not these are of substantial public interest. And I'll go over that. If you look at the, take a look at Exhibit E, because I wanted to go over with you basically how it's going to play out. So if you look at Exhibit E, I've given you two scenarios, a $5.6 million, a $5.6 million bond and a $9 million bond. Now, Mr. Gilpin admitted that they're going to issue a $5.6 million bond, but there's already other indebtedness. So realistically, we're probably up at the $9 million point already in indebtedness. So if you look at the area that I highlighted, let me explain a little bit about facility recovery bonds. They're unrated. So you have A-bonds, B-bonds, and C-bonds. And then you have unrated what's called private activity bonds. They're hot, much higher risk, much higher interest rate. So an A-bond right now may be trading at 6%. A double B-bond may trade around 8%. So a private activity bond, it's not unlikely that it could trade in the range of 10%. So what I've done is the formula that in the Project K agreement, which I've given you, says that we will pay a maximum amount of whatever the yield of the bond amortized over 30 years. So you can see on the spreadsheet, that's 19.4 million. And then, you will also get to pay credit enhancement. Now, credit enhancement is bond insurance. So basically, what they're asking the city to pay is bond insurance to guarantee in case there's a default. And then there's remarketing fees if they should decide to resell the bond. So the good news is that I found out today that it's unlikely they're going to go for the bond insurance. And they probably won't remarket. But I just wanted to show you that based on this agreement, we are looking at $19 million having to, in terms of sales tax rebate. And to put that in terms of half of the sales tax at 3%, if we rebate them one and a half cents, we will have reached that maximum, 19 million, after that entire development reaches a total sales of about $1 billion. So I think some of us may already be deceased by the time that happens. By the way, if the bond should be less than 10%, I gave you a percentage spread point. So for each percentage point it drops, you'd save $2.3 million on that. The bottom line is that we don't know enough. We don't know what the yield is. We don't know what the term. That shocked me, that he didn't know whether the bond was 10-year, 20-year, 30-year. And so that gravely concerns me. So based on, based on that, I think that two things. One, I'm going to ask that the council or recommend that the council first correct the false statements that are in that mayor certification. Second, I'm going to ask that the city council decide whether or not this is substantial financial interest. And then the third thing, you'll see on the last page of my first statement. I think that you need to obtain from Mr. Gilpin at least an estimate of the yield on the bonds. You need to find out what the term is. Hopefully, it's 10 or 20-year, which will be a much lower interest rate. And then you need certification from Mr. Gilpin that the sales price of the bond will be 5.6 million. And let me explain why that's important.
Dr. Simmons, this is 10 minutes now, so this is...
Yes, I'm wrapping up.
Okay.
The reason that the sales price is important is if the sales price is lower than the 5.6 million, your yield will be higher. And then the fourth thing is you need assurance that there's not going to be any credit enhancement or that there's not going to be any remarketing. And your deadline for this, just so you know, on these bonds, this, the bonds have to be issued by December 31st. So that means that you'll need to gather that information from Mr. Gilpin in order for you as a council to decide on it. Sorry it took so long, but it's very, very important that you understand all that. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Simmons? It's obvious you've done a lot of research. We appreciate this, and we will definitely be giving it a look. Councilman Gillespie?
Thank you. I do have a question for our attorney to see if it's, if he has any comments on this tonight, or is it too early?
You're going to have to let me digest all of this. This is a little...
When you come back up for air, please let me know.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Yes, exactly. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Jan Ernest. I'm director of the Otahoga Prattville Public Library. My numbers are going to be much smaller than the gentleman that just spoke. I am here tonight to ask you to vote in favor of the resolution to release the first quarterly funding allocation to the Otahoga Prattville Public Library. For those of you who may not know, the city and the county provide over 92% of the library's operating fund, operating appropriations. As of December the 20, December the 6th, we are running in a $32,000 deficit. We are in the red. I explain to people that do not understand about public libraries and their funding that we are essentially a small business here in Prattville. We must pay salaries, payroll taxes, health insurance. We must pay postage expenses. We are a component of the city of Prattville, but we are an independent agency as such, and we get our funding. In addition to the operating expenses, we are, we have to buy then the books and the audio books and the other things that we, that we use to do, to do business in our library. A few weeks ago, someone asked at one of these public hearings why the city of Prattville funds the public library. And December 17th, 1974, a joint resolution between the city of Prattville and the Otahoga County Commission was passed to form an Otahoga Prattville Public Library system. It was felt that the new building, it was a new building at that time, was, was in the type of situation that where we could serve the citizens of Otahoga County and Prattville with library services. I haven't been able to find out exactly how much money or the appropriations or the divide in the money, but that is the reason that the city of Prattville and the Otahoga County Commission fund public libraries. And I hope that that commitment will continue. I know that we are serving more people than ever in our public libraries. And I hope that you'll consider giving us our first quarter appropriations.
Any questions for Ms. Ernest? Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you for coming down, which I know you're on the agenda for tonight. But my understanding is, is that once we bring this up before, it's then supposed to sit over for two weeks until our next council meeting. Is that going to be an issue with you?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand.
Under normal council rules, this will hold for two weeks to our next council meeting. Is that going to be...
We can, we can do that. We, we certainly, we have a small reserve that we're living on right now. But to approve it will certainly help us out so much until your budget's passed. Any questions?
Councilman Bowles?
I just want to say thank you for a good job you all do down there. I did rent a book a couple of weeks, I don't know, about a month or two ago for my daughter.
Good.
Really enjoyed running down there, meeting all the workers, finding the book. They were very helpful to get me the right book. And you all do a good job. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes.
Councilman Renninger?
Mr. Bowles, did you return the book?
I was actually one day late and did pay a fine.
I was going to check your record as soon as I got back to the library.
Any other questions for Ms. Ernest? And we really do appreciate you coming down. We appreciate all you do.
My pleasure.
Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council? Mr. Graham?
I'm Charlie Graham. I live at 126 Holly Court. I don't know if this is luck this evening, but I'd like to commend either Lady Luck or whoever's worked on the PA system, because it's very audible this evening. I appreciate it. Looking at tonight's agenda, items 3, 5, 6, and 7 have to do with authorization of expenditures. I've heard this requested previously and do not understand why you councilmen do not demand that agenda items having a monetary value associated with them be listed along with the monetary values on the agenda. And that helps everybody to understand the scope of what we're talking about. I do recall John Lee Finnegan gave you a list of items over the past year or so, Councilman Miller. And has any other thought been given to that? Is there a reason we don't want to put monetary figures on the agenda so that everybody understands the scope and magnitude of the item we're dealing with?
That has been a suggestion that has been made. I know I've heard it from folks coming down, Ms. Finnegan and others, a couple of times. And I would say that it is being given due consideration. There are a number of things that we're going to be looking at in terms of moving forward from this point. Many of those reflecting my new role in the seat of president. And I can assure you that all of those things are going to be looked at. It's on a list. It's certainly not been written off. But at the same time, I'm not going to start trying to map out a piecemeal sort of a approach to that. I want to step back and then have the whole list of things that we want to do. And that one definitely will be under consideration. Those are the sorts of things we appreciate you and other speakers bringing to our attention. So it's not lost. It's just not there yet where you see it being reflected as you've recommended.
That's great. We will appreciate you doing something like that. On the subject of cost, ordinance items 1 and 2 on the agenda will also have costs associated with them. What are the, when you have an item like this that has to do with annexation, do you go through a process of determining what the projected, excuse me, projected first year cost will be and then the repetitive recurring cost annually thereafter of dealing with the annexation? Like you could have a lot of preliminary hookup costs, this sort of thing with water, sewage, et cetera. Are these numbers going to be available on these particular annexations at any time?
I'm not sure. That's something that we'll need to look into. I know that we have an annexation committee that reviews annexation requests, the planning department, the engineering department, and the appropriate departments. I'm not sure about specific financial, you know, aspects that you're mentioning, but that's certainly something I can follow up on.
Annexations don't necessarily have a history of being economically effective. And I think we really ought to know what we're getting into when we do something like this.
Good point.
Everything from police standpoint to utilities. I would like for the mayor, since the mayor has commented on this particular item a time or two in the past, you might do it in your report tonight if you have a report. I would appreciate it. If, there's, there's been discussion from time to time about making the city codes and ordinances available on the website. And it's, has sounded like at times, we were very close to that. And then I haven't heard anything lately. If you would address that.
Mr. Graham, you're addressing the council from the...
Well, whoever knows about that?
Yeah.
The only reason that I mention the mayor is because I've heard him comment on it at previous council meetings. And whoever knows, I would appreciate some information on that. It seems like it was a more important issue at one time, and then maybe it's been set aside for some reason. And...
I'd be glad to answer that. Councilman, you recognize?
Thank you. Just so happened recently, I had an incident Sunday that I would have been really appreciative if I could have pulled some codes up. And I have talked with our city attorney about that, and it's definitely in the works, just right around the corner.
That's good. So we're close?
We're close, yes. Thank you.
We'll appreciate that. What are the plans on the 2010 audit? Is it in process?
Yes, that...
You know, last year, we had the fiasco of whether 2009 wasn't ready until summer. And we started asking questions, and all of our financial people were bogged down on the upcoming new 2011.
The, the audit is underway. I'm going to ask you to make comments, suggestions, whatever you want to comment on. But we're not going to get into a question and answer session here during this portion of our meeting. That's really not the purpose, for you to come down and give us suggestions, give us comments. You can ask questions.
That's fine. I'm here as a concerned citizen.
Yeah.
I want to, I assume my questions will be entered into the record. Sometimes things said are not entered into the record. And if I can have the confidence that somebody will get back to me, email, US Mail, or Pony Express. You know, I just come to be heard, want to be recorded, and I would love to have a response of some sort from someone. When are you going to finalize the budget on 2010-11? You don't have to answer. I just would like to know that it's still in the works. The year is going by, and want to be sure that something's in process. There were comments about open hearings, work sessions and things. And then I haven't heard anything about open hearings and work sessions and things lately. So just would like to be sure that something's in progress there.
There very definitely is something in progress. There is an incredible amount of work going on. It has been extremely time consuming. We have met with the probably over half of the department heads at this point in time. We've been in the finance committee. We are working diligently with the mayor and his staff in addition to the department heads. No one wants it accomplished more than I think the seven folks sitting up here on the dais. Fact of the matter is, there are a couple of reasons. One is because some of the cost savings areas that we're considering, the sooner they're implemented, the more time they are in effect. So you accrue more of the savings connected with those measures. The second reason is because the city employees, the citizens, you, we, everyone involved needs to have the stability and a sense of what direction we're going earlier than later. It's just a stressful, kind of unsettling window of time that we're under. And so I commit to you and the other citizens that we are posthaste in terms of trying to accomplish that. At the same time, it's not the sort of thing that you need to do hastily or without all of the information in place. And we're working diligently in that regard as well.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down. Any questions for Mr. Graham? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to address the city council? Seeing none, Mayor, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to follow up on one of Mr. Graham's comments. You know, people, it's great that we live in America and people can choose where they want to shop, and they can choose who they, what business they want to visit. They can choose with whom they want to associate. But they only have one city government for their municipal needs, one mayor, one city council. And one thing that we as the administration and the folks that work for the city, you know, we have to respect everyone, including those who may not have supported us. We have to treat them with respect. We have to treat them with dignity, with honor. And hopefully, you know, they get a, get a smile with their service. And, you know, we're all human, but I hope, I hope we've done that. That is the goal of this administration. I want to talk about the code for just a second. I don't have any prepared remarks on the city code. But I'll tell you the, you know, that's one of my pet peeves. And I know our city attorney's probably sitting right behind me. He's probably got a smirk on his face because he knows that that's a pet peeve of mine. I think, I know this administration, if you look at our website today and you look at our website maybe five years ago, it's pretty apparent that the administration's goals on the website is to put as much information out there so citizens can receive that information. They can print out a copy of the code section if they want to. As Councilman Gillespie noted, and I know as the clerk noted, and I will now note, that is a goal to get the code online just as quickly as possible. That may necessitate you guys, the city council, adopting something because we've, we've had meetings with all of the department heads, the code folks. So I guess enough said about that. That's a goal that we want to finish, and, and we'll make sure we double our efforts. I want to just remind you of two or three things. One, I want to let you know that, as you know, last Tuesday, we had a storm blow through Prattville about, I guess, 10 o'clock, 9:30, 10 o'clock. National Weather Service categorized that storm as a minor EF1 tornado. It was minor to moderate damage throughout our community, basically districts... It was minor to moderate damage throughout our community, basically District Seven, a little bit of District Six, and a little bit of District Five. There may have been damage in other districts, but those were the three districts that sustained the most heavy damage, Country Club Estates, probably the most damage, and then up in Oakley Heights near the intermediate and elementary school. No injuries. We do not expect a federal or statewide disaster declaration. There's been no threshold of public assistance met, no I.A. individual assistance thresholds have been met, and we certainly don't expect any declaration. Our EMA folks were on the scene, as well as our public safety folks. We had some power outages, but by and large, we made it through fairly decently. As I told a lady who had a tree on her house, you know, it's kind of minor unless you have a tree on your house that's major to you. So there were some roof damages, some outbuildings blown around fences, and some debris. We did begin debris removal. I noticed there was a letter to the editor in the paper that was chastising me about debris removal on private property. You know, that's illegal. We didn't do any debris removal on private property. We went through the neighborhoods that were... that had the most debris, and our public works folks teamed up to get that debris off... get that debris removed just as quickly as possible. I know that down on Washington Ferry over the weekend, a lot of folks had moved stuff to the curbs, debris to the curbs, and that was taken care of. I want to mention resolution number three, and then I've got two other items. Resolution number three is a resolution authorizing the integrated emergency management course, and our EMA director, Rocky Milliman, is here, and I'm going to ask Rocky to come up. I want to tell you first, before Rocky comes, that this is a course that I think is very valuable for our city. I'm very proud that our city, our county, was selected to participate in this course. There are, you know, there's a lot of questions, and I know folks have drilled down and are getting into some of the minutia of the details, and we certainly appreciate that. We have done our... you know, the staff has done the yeoman's job of putting this scenario together, determining who should attend this course, and moving forward. So with that, I'll let Rocky speak, and then if you have any questions, be more than happy to address them.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate you, and thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak to the council. I've prepared a brief statement here. Hopefully, it will answer everybody's questions. I've spoke with five of the councilmen over the last week or so. I apologize, Councilman Woods and Councilman Fink, I didn't get around to you guys, but I would hope that this answers many of your questions, and if you have any further, I'd be glad to answer them. Basically, the course will provide us three... I'm going to give you a couple of definitions so we're all on the same page. We don't... you know, everybody uses acronyms, so we want to make sure we're all on the same page. The functional exercise, there'll be three of them during the week that we're up there. And a functional exercise is a time-pressured exercise of a minimum number of functions of an emergency operations plan designed to test and evaluate individual capabilities, multiple functions within a function, or interdependent groups of functions. All these exercises that EMA does, that EMI does, are considered under the HCEP, which is the Homeland Security Exercise and Evaluation Program. The purpose of it is to provide a methodology and a strategy that is standard. Every exercise that they use has a standard practice that they will go by. The main purpose is to make sure that all the exercise design, development, conduct, evaluation, and the most important, improvement planning are done the same way. So you can have an exercise in Arizona, you can have an exercise in Alabama, but they will have the same guidelines and the same stipulations to make sure that the communities are the best prepared for whatever disaster comes their way. Again, I mentioned that the three functional exercises we'll be going through are designed based on our request back a year and a half ago when we put this package together. Thirty percent of it is initially your response, the other seventy percent is the recovery. Again, the recovery aspect of it doesn't get all the limelight from the newspapers and stuff. It's the first responders that are being seen on the cameras and on... in the papers, you know, the ones that are rescuing our citizens. But the seven... the ninety percent of what we are doing is the most important, because this gets our city back to pre-disaster, and that's where the important aspects of it are. And I know you seven gentlemen are really interested in making sure that your citizens are getting back to where they were prior to a disaster and incident. One of the questions that came up was the benefits to this training, and I wanted to go on record. One of the councilmen mentioned that they would like to have something on record. I'm going to provide those benefits to you, and of course, these are just a few that I've highlighted. One is to provide additional training and alternative solutions to support the community during a disaster or incident. We can't come up with all the answers as far as an incident goes. Our police and our fire are trained extensively, but there are other points of view out there, and these people are experts. They've been doing this for many years. They can bring those other alternative solutions to us and let us train and get better at what we do. It also provides the support organizations. I know there's questions as to some of the individuals, some of the organizations that are going to Emmitsburg. Some of that has come to question, but the supportive organizations play a key role on the recovery side. This helps with policies and procedures. This helps with administrative practices as far as labor, materials, manning, all the things that you have to put together if you have a declaration to bring funds back to the city as far as that concerned. There's a huge cash outlay on a disaster, but if we can recover some, or if not most of it, from FEMA, from a declaration, we bring the money back into the coffers. And I know this council is very interested in making sure that they're solvent as far as the city is going. It allows for also organizations to work together as a team in a pressure-based scenario that help with a real disaster if it comes. Also allowing for networking with the city, county, private industry, nonprofit organizations that will benefit the citizens when it comes to avenues where we can expend or explore during the recovery phase of the operation. HCEP standards are set. This is set for all communities. This will benefit the community as a... in large. So...
Mr. Milliman, if you could hit the highlights for us, because you have met... I mean, we've had this opportunity...
Yes. I just want to... one more thing, and then I'm through. This opportunity is limited to ten cities in a year. We are being given this privilege because of the mayor, the chairman of the commission, the state, Region Four FEMA administrator, and then the director of EMI. All gave endorsements to a community that is a little over 50,000 citizens in Otoga County. Yuma, Arizona, has 194,000. These are some of the communities that have had it in the past. City of Boston, 645,000. Tuscaloosa, close to home, 179,000. These are 2008 census numbers. We are a small community, but we have been given a benefit here to be able to do this. We will not get this opportunity in the future. This is our opportunity to get as many people in the city and in the community to be able to do what we can to benefit the citizens of Prattville. So I appreciate everything. If there's any further questions you may have, please.
Any questions for Mr. Milliman? Councilman Bowles?
Do you have any idea how long it will take FEMA to refund our money?
The... my understanding from Crystal and Roxanne from my staff had gone to a PIO class last year. It is roughly about six weeks where they will get the return on their money.
And again, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, you were...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to remind you or let you know that we had a very successful Medline groundbreaking this morning. Councilman Reniger represented the city council and spoke at that event, but we had... I thought... what I thought was going to be a very small crowd because the weather was about 30 degrees, but we had an overflow crowd, a really very positive event. I know Councilman Gillespie was at that event also. Finally, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you, each of you, and the members of... or the citizens of Prattville for the many expressions of sympathy over the last week during this time of my grandfather's death. You know, there's times to be sad, and it's certainly definitely a sad time in my life, but I will have to say that, you know, my grandfather lived to be 95, and he played bridge the Friday before he died, and there was no hospice care. It was just a wow moment of God and a lot of blessings, and, you know, we all are going to reach that road at some point, and that's a great way to go. And again, while it's sad for our family, certainly a lot of blessings to be seen, so I thank you and thank the citizens of Prattville for the many expressions of just prayer and thought and love that our family has received. With that, Mr. Chairman, if there are any questions or comments or concerns, I'll be more than happy to address.
Any questions for the mayor? Councilman Fink?
I just want to publicly offer my condolences to the family. I know I came to the visitation, my wife and I did, and he was a great individual, and he was extremely proud of you, and they're... what's sad here, they're rejoicing in heaven.
That's right. Councilman Gillespie?
Yes, sir, thank you. And I'd also like to offer my condolences again, but to move on to city business.
Certainly.
Can you reassure me that if we were to happen to have a major storm or an issue while the upper middle management are gone to Maryland, that we do have a plan to cover the city of Prattville?
Yes, sir, we do. All of our department directors have a plan. Working with EMA, the first, you know, responders would be the public safety, and deputy chiefs will be here in the fire department, captains in the police department, and we would certainly get home as quickly as we needed to. But, you know, the ultimate goal of this training or this exercise was to get the training. But yes, there is a plan.
Okay, thank you. Another thing I would like to commend Kelly Cook for her extra efforts for the Christmas parade, because from my understanding, she saved the city a small amount, a good chunk of change by everything that she went through for the Christmas parade. And also, I've had several people call me lately about the city website, and I was actually... which they actually called me about some city business, and I directed them the city website, and they called me back later and told me that they were able to navigate through it, and they... I know we have a lot of people looking through it, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Report from councilmen on special committees. Councilman Gillespie?
Yes, sir. 911 met yesterday, elected some new officers. Mike Magoo is now the chairperson for 911. Hootie Gibson, who I need to tip my hat to, was there numerous years, and I think that under his tenure, the 911 board is better off now than when he stepped on, and Johnny Manbrayer has grabbed hold of the reins and seems to be working some pretty good miracles there. But I do notice that we have a resolution before us tonight on Russell Crowley to take Hootie Gibson's place, so we do recommend that that be passed tonight.
Thank you, man. Thank you. Councilman Wood?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The Public Safety Committee has met, met on December 7th on both of these issues. It's going to be my recommendation that we go ahead and vote on these issues tonight. Several things have been said. I have other comments that I will make, but I will make them at that appropriate time. Thank you.
Councilman Argo?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Mr. President, two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to express my appreciation to the council for allowing me to serve as president and turn the gavel over to someone who is very ably carrying on a terrific job. Tonight, Mr. President, I would respectfully request that you allow me to resign from the finance committee, and I humbly respect and request that you ask Councilman Gillespie to serve on the finance committee. The finance committee is working diligently, working very hard to craft some sort of a budget, meeting with department heads, and unfortunately, with my work schedule, it's just very difficult for me to make the early morning and the late evening meetings, and it's not fair to you and Councilman Reniger to try to carry that on without me. Obviously, I would like to assist in any way that I can, but I humbly request that you allow me to resign and ask that Councilman Gillespie be appointed in my place. Thank you.
Thank you, man. Thank you, Councilman Argo. Councilman Reniger?
I have nothing right now.
Councilman Bowles?
No, sir.
Councilman Fink?
Yeah, if I could just get Dean and Bill and Drew Peterson to hang over just a few minutes so we can get a leisure services committee meeting scheduled. Thanks.
And I certainly appreciate your request, Councilman Argo, and will honor it. I think that I've given essentially the basic elements of a report from the finance committee. It's a... I've just reiterated, it's a very time-consuming process, but I think the investment in getting the information, especially talking to the department heads, has been invaluable. We still have a number of those left on the agenda. I want to publicly thank Gina Smith for her support in that effort, especially with scheduling and helping us to make it happen. And so I think that I made the major points when Mr. Graham was speaking to us earlier. As Councilman Argo mentioned, we had a change in the presidency, and I ascended to this position of president since I was the pro tem, and so it falls to us now to look at filling the president pro temporary spot, which essentially is vice president. This is the individual that moves up to the presidency and ultimately to the mayor's spot if those seats were vacated. And so I now would open the floor for nominations for president pro tem. Councilman Argo?
Mr. President, I humbly... humbly request that we place in the nomination the name of Mike Reniger for pro tem.
Okay, thank you. And gentlemen, these don't need... these don't take seconds, so are there any other nominations?
Mr. President, I nominate Bill Gillespie.
Okay, Councilman Gillespie is nominated. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I close the floor to nominations, and I need a little guidance on how we actually conduct this vote.
You're going to do it by voice vote, but if any of the member would choose to do it by roll call, y'all can follow the procedure and ask for the roll call.
Okay.
But it just takes a voice vote.
All in favor of Councilman Gillespie signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All in favor of Councilman Reniger signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Four, three. So Councilman Gillespie?
Roll call.
Roll call?
Roll call.
Okay, Councilman Fink's requested a roll call, and I think that's important to do. This is a very important issue. Councilman Gillespie?
Gillespie.
Oh, you do that, don't you? Okay, I'm sorry. Y'all, I'm working on it.
Councilman Gillespie?
Gillespie.
Councilman Wood?
Aye. Gillespie?
Councilman Argo?
Councilman Reniger.
Councilman Miller?
Reniger.
Councilman Reniger?
I'll vote for myself.
Councilman?
Gillespie.
Councilman Fink?
Gillespie.
Four, three. Councilman Gillespie. Congratulations, Councilman Gillespie.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I have a point of privilege, please?
You certainly may.
Congratulations, Phil. I know you'll do well.
Thank you.
We will now move into our regular agenda. We have 12 items. The first two were the subject of our earlier public hearing resolution. The first item is a resolution to grant a lounge retail liquor Class 1 license for Blue Iguana Incorporated doing business as Blue Iguana. Councilman, would you read this resolution, please?
Where Stephen Lender, president of Blue Iguana Incorporated doing business as Blue Iguana, has applied for a lounge retail liquor license Class 1 at the business located at 17148 East Main Street, Prattville, Alabama 36066, which is a lounge, where said license would be a new application, and now therefore be resolved that the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama, here approves the issuance of a lounge retail liquor license Class 1 to Stephen Lender. class one to Stephen Lender, president of Blue Iguana Incorporated doing business as Blue Iguana. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gillespie. Is there any discussion on resolution number one? Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Several thoughts on this item and the item that comes behind it. A few weeks ago, the council approved measures to cut costs for, I believe it was Bama Lanes to make some significant improvements for larger family gatherings and larger tournaments and things of that nature, more family-friendly. I guess, you know, I was kind of thrown by the fact that this particular license came before us based on what I, as a council person, had agreed, and I believe unanimously we agreed, to help Bama Lane in cutting costs for that particular item. With that being said, Mr. Chair, it has been stated that precedent has been set on lounge class one license, but precedent has not been set for lounge class one license, not by this council. If a precedent has been set, it's been set by our court system. It's not been set by us. With that being said, I've already talked about police reports that indicate enormous calls, several types of activity, and I'm not even going to go into naming all of the activity. Some probably from the Blue Iguana and some probably from some of the other establishment out there. Nevertheless, many man-hours, police man-hours, being called in that particular area. I believe granting the lounge license where an individual can consume alcoholic beverages without eating to help cut that, this is only going to increase that. Lounge would only increase that activity. Over the years, I've tried to be fair, and I believe you, gentlemen, Mr. Zen and any others that have come before us requesting these type of licenses, a good businessman, that's why I supported what you wanted to do earlier. But in September 2008, Blue Iguana applied for the same license, and it was denied. October 24th, I mean November 4th, 2008, denied. The selling such, apply for lounge retail liquor license, class one, it was denied. Howard Rogers III applied for the same license for the Cabana Club, it was denied. Lounge class two package store doing business, Nazzy DPA, denied. Lounge class two package store to Oro Swami, October 7th, was also denied. Lounge class two package store to Oro Swami doing business at S&amp;S Eagles, December 7th, 2004, is also denied. These licenses were denied because these applications are not in the best interest of this community. My decision to vote no is based simply on the health, safety, and welfare in the public of the community as it has been in the past. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Any other councilmen wish to speak on resolution number one? Councilman Argo?
Mr. President, members of the council, I have to tell my colleague, Mr. Wood, that's probably one of the most eloquent speeches I have ever heard you give, and I deeply appreciate that. I truly do, because I think that, that I know that Mr. Wood, at least from my estimation, is doing exactly what the chairman of a committee ought to do. He has looked into the licenses, he has talked with the individuals, he's spoken with the police chief, and he is, he's absolutely done exactly what a chairman of a committee ought to do, and I deeply appreciate that. I've never spoken on behalf of a club license or lounge license, and I'm not going to start now. But I will say this: We all know that the Blue Iguana has been operating as a lounge, as Mr. Zen said, for seven years. The ABC Board came and met with each one of us in a public setting, told us that they were operating outside of their license and they needed to operate within their license. So he's done exactly what he was supposed to do. He has brought a lounge retail liquor license before us. I've never voted for a lounge retail license, and I'm not voting for this one. But what I am saying is, is that every member of this council knows what they're trying to do. We all know exactly that the license that they need to operate the way they have for seven years is a lounge license. We all know that all of the problems that are in this packet over here are not directly related to the Blue Iguana. They are related to other institutions in that shopping center as well. We all know that that is a place where young people and young adults congregate late at night, no fault of the Blue Iguanas, that they've been doing that for years. So all I'm going to say, Mr. President, is that I understand exactly where Mr. Wood's coming from. I think that the last thing we need to do right now is get ourselves in a situation where we're going to find ourselves in court. No offense to my good friend Judge sitting there, but we all know he's going to sue us. He's already done it once. Mr. Zen said he's going to get a lawyer. He's going to sue us, so we're going to be paying legal fees for something we know we're going to have to spend money for. And quite frankly, gentlemen, we don't have the money at the moment to do that. So, Mr. President, I'm going to make a motion that we hold resolution number one for two weeks to give us some time to do a little bit more thinking about this before we turn somebody down knowing we're going to end up in court. My motion is to hold for two weeks.
Second.
Motion is to hold by Councilman Argo and seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion on the motion to hold resolution number one? Councilman Gillespie?
I guess maybe not necessarily about holding, but just a message to Mr. Zen that he needs to come back before us with a plan.
Any other comments, questions on the motion to hold? Okay, seeing none, we'll now vote on the motion to hold resolution number one until our next meeting. All in favor of holding resolution number one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Chair votes aye. Motion number one is held for two weeks. Resolution number two, to grant a lounge retail liquor class two package store for Oro Swami, owner of Eagle Holding LLC doing business as Bama Package Store number 27. Councilman Gillespie, can you introduce this resolution for us, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. Whereas Oro Swami, owner of Eagle Holding LLC doing business as Bama Package Store number 27, has obtained the business located at 2565-A Cobb's Ford Road, Prattville, Alabama 36066, which is intended to be a package store, whereas the owner of said business has applied for lounge retail liquor class two package store license, and whereas said license would be a new application, where said application has been investigated by the City of Prattville Police Department, referred to the City Council Public Safety Committee, but therefore resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama hereby approves the issuance of a lounge retail liquor class two package store license to Oro Swami, owner of Eagle Holding LLC, DBA Bama Package Store number 27, 2565-A Cobb's Ford Road, Prattville, Alabama. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Gillespie. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion on resolution number two? Councilman Argo?
Mr. President, I make a motion we hold resolution number two for two weeks.
Second.
Motion to hold resolution two by Councilman Argo, seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion on the motion to hold resolution number two?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Wood?
For the sake of knowing, needing some additional information, just tell me, what are we looking for on this particular one? What information are we looking for?
Is that a question of me or Councilman Argo?
I don't care, we'll answer it.
Councilman Argo, I think that one is, since it's your motion.
Mr. President, quite frankly, and Mr. Wood, I appreciate the question. I really don't know what more information we need on resolution number two. I just feel that it's only fair that if we're going to, if we're going to hold resolution number one, we ought to hold resolution number two. That will at least give this council a little bit more time to think about what we're about to do, because I've already stated, I'm going to vote against resolution number one, and I'm going to vote against resolution number two. I think, I think the majority of the council is going to do that as well, but quite frankly, I know my vote is going to put this city in a place where we're going to end up in court, and I just don't think that we have the money to be paying attorneys. While I love Mr. McDowell and I love Judge Drinkard, and I'd love to give him a great Christmas present, but I just don't think it ought to be by allowing them to have to go to court and defend and allege something when we already know that we're going to lose. We have a terrible track record in court. We're 0-2 since I've been on the council, and I don't see any way how we're going to prevail on 1-2. So I just, I want the council to just take a little bit of time, and let's think about, even though we all, we're going to vote our conscience, and that's going to be the will of the council, but I know we're going to end up spending money right now for attorney's fees that we just don't have. So I'm just going to ask Mr. Wood's indulgence and allow me to have another two weeks on resolution number two.
Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You held that indulgence, but basically, basically, based on what you said, Mr. Argo, and for the fellow council members, I just don't see anything changing. It's a fact now that, and these are the most, some of the most complicated issues we have right now, lounge and package store license coming before us, and they're going to continue. But we're going to have to address them as they come. That's what we're supposed to do, and we got two before us tonight. That needs to be addressed, and they're not going to be addressed. But we need to address them as they come. Most of the people that's coming, they're coming with legal representation anyway. So in my mind, that tells me, if I don't get what I want, I'm going to court. Well, if the court wants to continue setting precedents and not allowing the city council to make a vote that they've been given the opportunity and privilege and supposed to do, then so let the court do that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Any other comments on the motion to hold? Okay, gentlemen, we will now vote on the motion to hold resolution number two. All in favor of the motion to hold signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Chair votes aye. And Madam Clerk, could you verify what the vote was?
Five to two.
Five to two, that's what I thought. Thank you. Resolution number three is to authorize the expenditure of funds for city staff to attend the Integrated Emergency Management Course. This was held from November 16 meeting. I've discussed this with the city attorney, and we do need to suspend the rules even though it was held from a budget perspective, since we're under, we don't have an operational budget right now, so in order to consider resolution number three, we will need a suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Fink.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of the motion to suspend the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the rules are suspended. This resolution is now properly before us.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Renninger?
What I'm about to do is to propose an amendment to this resolution. It in no way reflects on the value of the program as it's been presented. There's nothing personal about this. It's strictly in the effort of being a good steward of public funding. I have a copy of this for each one of you and one for the city clerk. I would like to pass these down. The amendment for the resolution, line 30 through line 32 amended to read, whereas up to 18 city employees will attend such training and attendance shall be restricted to salaried employees only, and the cost of the meal card for the duration of the class is approximately $110 for each participant. Line 36 through 38 should be changed to read that up to $1,980 in no sense is approved and authorized to be expended from the general fund for meal cards associated with the Integrated Emergency Management Course. I so move.
Councilman Renninger has proposed an amendment. Is any, do I hear a second on that?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Is there any discussion on the proposed amendment? Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. I don't understand why we had to suspend the rules. It already held over for two weeks, but I'm not asking, I just don't understand. As far as the amendments go, I appreciate Mr. Renninger bringing this amendment. I know that he's put a lot of hard work and thought into it. There's been a lot of discussion from the council, and I had an opportunity to talk to Rocky Milliman about this, and there's absolutely no question that this training is essential for our city. If anyone thought that because we had a tornado several years ago, that we were now immune from that, can look at this past weekend and know that that's not the truth. We are, we are always going to be facing catastrophes of some kind, and it's essential that our staff be prepared to deal with those. However, having said that, way back when this trip was brought before the council, and I appreciate the mayor and Rocky and all the hard work that went into doing this, to my memory, there was never any discussion of 34 people going. And it's absolutely essential that 34 people go, so be it. It's being paid for, no cost to the city except for the meal cards. But what has happened, because we're taking 34 people, is that some of those employees are salaried and some of those people are hourly, which means that the hourly employees are going to be able to be paid for overtime, which increases the cost of the trip, and that money is not reimbursable to the city. So we're in a situation where we're going to have employees who are going to be going, they're going to be being trained, but because they're hourly, they're going to be drawing overtime, ups the cost of the trip. Now, I know that there's been some discussion about the possibility of giving employees comp time instead of overtime. Well, at least on overtime, the employee is on the job, working hard, and they're drawing extra pay because they've gone over their hourly time. But if they're given comp time, they're able to take time off, and they're getting straight time. So in my estimation, even comp time is costing the city because we're losing the productivity of the time they're going to be off. That's hard for me to understand. That's hard for me to understand. But having been through a lot of EMA training over my years, I understand how important this is. I just think that even as important as this is, it's coming at a difficult time in our city when we're dealing with budgets, and we're having to figure out where we can save money. And even reducing from 34 to 18 is saving about $3,000, and in my estimation, that's worth saving at this point. But again, I want the employees that are supposed to go, and Rocky to know, I absolutely, wholeheartedly endorse this training. It's essential that our employees be trained. But it's just at a bad time, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Any other comments on the proposed amendment? All in favor of the proposed amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Chair votes nay? Division of the House by Councilman Fink.
Councilman Gillespie?
Nay.
Councilman Wood?
Nay.
Councilman Argo?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Nay.
Councilman Renninger?
Aye.
Councilman Bowles?
Aye.
Councilman Fink?
Nay.
The proposed amendment fails. So now we will vote on the resolution. All in favor of Resolution Number Three?
Mr. President, may I have just a moment? I would like to make a comment before we vote.
Sure. Councilman Gillespie?
Thank you. I agree with Council Argo that, you know, there is a lot of benefit from the training and so forth, but I feel like that right now, the horse is already out of the barn. This is too late. We should've, we should've picked up on this number a long time ago. By voting on this tonight, though, I need to assure everybody that, you know, this is not the end of it. We have a lot of things we still need to be checking on exactly as, exactly which protocol was followed, and we've got a lot of work to find out where the ball was dropped, who dropped it, and who needs to pick it up and run with it. So, you know, by far, this is not the end of this one. But I am going to support it as on Resolution Number Three.
Thank you, Councilman Gillespie. Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Man, we need to cut a lot of money. Not $3,000, like, you know, 3.5 million. So, you know, with that being said, we got numerous employees that have been preparing and taking classes over a year, or probably even longer, you know, to prepare themselves to get ready to go to this. I wanna save money and as much as possible, but, you know, for the amount of money that we're talking about saving, and for what these employees have gone through over the years, I just think it's incumbent to move forward, and hopefully, they can come back and provide better emergency assistance to our citizens. Thank you.
Councilman Bowles?
I would say that to save 3.5 million, you start with 3,000. You gotta start somewhere. You know, I was not happy with the way the whole thing came out that, oops, oh, we got overtime. Nobody mentioned it to the council. We're not mind readers. I felt like that was hid from us, because there's no way we would've gone with this if we'd known there was overtime. I wasn't happy with the way the plane tickets were bought on the day that the budget was gonna be rescinded. So I felt like it was one of those situations, like, oh, no, we gotta buy these tickets quick, or we won't be able to buy them next week. That should've come back before the council. We wouldn't be sitting here even talking about it if the plane tickets hadn't been bought. I'm not happy that the fact that we're sending off all of our department heads and our upper and middle management at one time, because we had a tornado last week. I know it wasn't a big tornado, I was outside playing in it, because how often can you do that? But it happens to Prattville, and it happens all the time. We have floods, we have tornadoes, hell. It just seems like God loves us for some reason, and He throws everything our way. So with that saying, I will not be supporting this, because I think it's at a very bad time. We have to start somewhere saving money, and I think we don't need to send our people off on this trip.
Thank you, Councilman Bowles. Any other comments on this one? Chair, we'd like to pass the gavel to Protem Gillespie and make some comments.
Thank you, City Clerk. Please recognize that Protem has a gavel, and he is recognizing Council President Tom Miller, Dr. Tom Miller.
Thank you, Councilman Gillespie. I would like to make a couple of comments. I think at the end of the day, this one was not an easy one to consider. A lot of that was based on the reasons that my fellow councilmen have cited. I know that there've been a lot of concerns, and continue to be some unanswered questions concerning this trip. But at the end of the day, when I step back from all of that, I think that this is a unique opportunity. It is something that this city will not have come its way probably ever again, and I'd never say never, but basically, to put it in the context of it was a singular event to be accepted, the application that we submitted to train our city staff. I agree, there are concerns. Again, I'm not gonna go through and reiterate those, but I would point out, relative to sending staff off and entertaining the thought of a disaster striking while they're all several hundred miles away, I've been assured by the mayor and the EMA director, Rocky, rather, Rocky, Mr. Milliman, that they're our second-tier staff who will be staying in the city, not participating on the trip. Mr. Brown from Fire, Captain Oates from Police, individuals of that caliber who will still be kinda minding the store, if you will. And also, the fact that 10% of a disaster is actually the response, 90% of it traditionally is the recovery portion. And that helped me also understand why folks who wouldn't ordinarily shake out on my top list, such as Fire and Police, but people that are in charge of our IT, our communication systems, those sorts of individuals were also an important and integral part of the team. So again, I think that there are a lot of issues here. Had it, certain information been known to us earlier, I think we could've had time and perhaps had a greater sense of comfort. But again, if I step away from all of that, this is an incredible return on investment, a singular opportunity to get premier training, training that will not come our way again. And I would ask you to be mindful that this is probably as important a decision as we're going to make relative to investing in the safety, public safety of this city. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Argo.
I just have to tell you, I love the fact that you have to call on me for a change. I like that. Just real quickly, I agree with Dr. Miller. I'm not opposed to the trip at all, and I don't want anyone to take my comments as being opposed to the trip. I'm not. This is a tremendous training opportunity that we cannot pass up. My comments stem strictly from the fact that we're trying to craft a budget. We're trying to pull together every dime that we can, and with all due respect to my friend, Mr. Wood, $3,000 I'm trying to save, he's spending, that's a $6,000 hit. So that's the difference we're talking about. I agree with Councilman Bowles. When I was 10 years old, my father gave me a quarter, and I was kinda a little aggravated that he only gave me a quarter. I wanted 50 cents, and he said, "Son, quarters add up to dollars." And that's where we are. We need to save every penny we can. And with all due respect to the EMA and the training folks in Emmitsburg, I still believe that there is a way for us to send 18, 19, 20, whatever number we pick, those people can be trained and come back and train our people, and we save that money. That's my only point, is saving the dollars. The trip is absolutely essential, the training is essential. We're gonna have a fire call right now, getting ready to go out. We've gotta have our folks trained. I'm merely trying to save a couple bucks. That's it. Thank you, sir.
Chair recognizes. Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Argo, that was eloquently stated, and I'm not gonna, you know, prolong this, but I have to comment back to that, because you stated it is so, you know, eloquently needed, and if it's needed this bad, and we allowed it to go for a year, or a year and a half, in preparing all these people, then I think it would be incumbent upon this body and the administration to find $3,000 someplace else and cut.
Well, before anybody else has any other comments, I want to please pass this back to the Council President.
Call the question.
Councilman Gillespie?
Mr. President, point of order. Call for the questions, not debatable.
It has to be seconded, and in his name.
I second it.
Okay, so, all right, the question's been called and seconded, and we vote on that, okay? All in favor of the call for, call of the question signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Chair votes aye, and the question is called. So gentlemen, we will now vote on Resolution Number Three. All in favor of Resolution Number Three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. Five to. Councilman Bowles and Councilman Renninger, nays. Okay, five to, and it passes. Resolution Number Four is to appoint Russell Crowley to the E-911 Board. Councilman Fink, can you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas a vacancy will occur on the E-911 Board due to the term expiration of Hootie Gibson on December 31, 2010, whereas it is the desire of the Prattville City Council to fill that vacancy to ensure the continuity of the Board's operation, be it therefore resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that Russell Crowley is hereby appointed to fill the vacancy effective June 1, 2011, and said term will expire on December 31, 2014, or until his successor is duly qualified and appointed. So moved.
Moved by Councilman Fink. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gillespie. Is there any discussion on Resolution Four? Okay, I would point out Russell Crowley, Mr. Crowley was here earlier, but I think he had, is he, okay, there's Russell. Thank you for hanging around. So this is Russell Crowley, for those of you that have not met him. All in favor of Resolution Number Four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and Resolution Number Four passes. Resolution Number Five, to authorize the payment of funds to the Prattville Area Chamber of Commerce. Councilman Argo, would you introduce this resolution?
Thank you, Mr. President. Whereas the Prattville Area Chamber of Commerce provides essential and vital economic development services to the City of Prattville, and whereas the City of Prattville is operating under a continuing resolution, under which only salaries and fixed expenses, namely, but not limited to utilities, insurance costs, normal and necessary operational costs, supplies, maintenance, and other forms for usual and necessary operations, are authorized for payment until further action of this council or approval of the budget. And whereas the chamber is, or soon will be, unable to continue its current level of operations regarding economic development due to insufficient funds, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the first-quarter allocation of $74,526 and a payment of $23,394 for outstanding obligations from the previous fiscal year are hereby authorized to be expended from the general fund and paid to the chamber. I so move, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilman Argo. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Councilman Fink. By point of order, because we're operating without an approved budget, and this item appropriates funds, we'll have to suspend the rules before we can consider it.
Mr. President, I move we suspend the rules.
Move to suspend the rules by Councilman Argo. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Councilman Argo?
Mr. President, members of the council, I know that by point of order, this holds for two weeks unless there's a suspension. I would just call attention to the council to let them know that the Finance Committee did meet with the chamber leadership and the head of the Economic Development Committee. And we were told at that meeting that if we did not do something by the 1st of December, that the chamber was in jeopardy of having to shut down its economic development obligations. Now, holding this for two weeks, probably not gonna make that big of a deal, but we owe this obligation, especially the $23,394 that we owe from last fiscal year. We owe that. That's an obligation of this city. We need to go ahead and pay it, so I urge you tonight to go ahead and suspend the rules. Let's get this debt paid. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Councilman Wood?
Can we discuss this without the rules being suspended?
Technically, you're not supposed to. You're really supposed to vote on the suspension, and then you can talk about it.
What I was asking, Mr. McDowell, we cannot discuss it until we get it before us, and if the suspension of the rules has not been passed, it's not before us.
That's correct.
So is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules?
We need to suspend the rules first, and then talk about it.
Right, but can you discuss the motion to suspend the rules, so you can suspend them? Yes. That's what?
That's just what I just did.
Okay.
Mr. McDowell, please clarify that again.
You're not supposed to talk about the resolution until it's properly before you. It's been brought before you, so it's properly there, but you haven't suspended the rules. So until you suspend the rules, you're not really supposed to talk about it. So you need to suspend the rules, don't talk about it till you do that, yea or nay. If it's nay, then you don't talk about it anymore, it automatically holds over. If it's yea, then y'all can talk about it.
Right, but again, my question is, when you are in the process of entertaining a suspension of the rules, and there's a motion and a second, don't you then have a segment where you discuss the motion to suspend the rules? If someone?
Yes, I guess I'm, how far do you wanna go?
Right, because of all the bleeding over and crossing the line, I understand that, but technically, you do have that discussion piece on the motion to suspend.
You could talk us to why it's important to suspend the rules, yes. Just not maybe the merits of the resolution.
Okay. All right, so, thank you, Councilman Wood. Did that clarify that? Okay, so the motion to suspend the rules is before us. All in favor of the motion to suspend the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
The chair votes aye, and the motion to suspend the rules did not carry on Resolution Number Five. So it automatically holds over until our next meeting.
Point of order. May I ask who voted nay? Okay, thank you.
Resolution Number Six, to authorize the payment of funds to the Prattville Ataga Humane Shelter. Councilman Bowles, will you introduce this for us, please?
Yes. Whereas the Prattville Ataga County Humane Shelter, P-A-H-S, provides essential and valid services to the citizens of Prattville, and whereas the City of Prattville is operating under a continuing resolution, under which only salaries and fixed expenses, namely, but not limited to utilities, insurance costs, normal and necessary operating costs, supplies, maintenance, and other items for usual and necessary operations, are authorized for payments until further action of the City Council or the approval of the budget. And whereas the P-A-H-S is, or soon will be, unable to continue its current level of operations due to its insignificant funds, now therefore be it removed, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the first-quarter allocations of $18,700... allocations of $18,750 is hereby authorized and expended for general fund and paid to P-A-H-S. I so move.
Moved by Councilman Bowles. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gillespie. This one likewise would require a suspension of the rules, since we're operating without an approved budget.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Fink.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Okay, we will now vote on the motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
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 Chair votes aye, the rules are not suspended. Resolution Number Seven, to release the first quarterly funding allocation to the Ataga Prattville Public Library. Councilman Renninger, can you introduce Resolution Number Seven?
I can and I will. Resolution to authorize the payment of funds to the Prattville Ataga Library, whereas the Ataga Prattville Public Library provides essential and vital services to the citizens of Prattville, and whereas the City of Prattville is operating under a continuing resolution, under which only salaries and fixed expenses, namely, but not limited to utilities, insurance costs, normal and necessary operational costs, supplies, maintenance, and other items for usual and necessary operations, are authorized for payment until further action of this council or the approval of the budget, and whereas the Ataga Prattville Public Library is, or soon will be, unable to continue its current level of operations due to insufficient funds, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, that the first quarter allocation of $66,250 is hereby authorized to be expended from the general fund and paid to the Ataga Prattville Public Library. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Renninger. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. As a point of order, this resolution will also have to automatically hold unless there is a move to suspend the rules.
Call for suspension of the rules.
Move, suspension of the rules moved by Councilman Renninger and seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of suspending the rules, signify by voting aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Chair votes aye, and the rules are not suspended. Resolution Number Eight, to set a public hearing to zone property located at 549 Covered Bridge Parkway to R4. Councilman Wood, would you introduce this resolution?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whereas Brentwood Landing Two Apartments, LTD is the owner of property described in attachment A and shown in attachment B, and whereas the property to be zoned is located at 549 Covered Bridge Parkway, whereas the subject property is currently outside the city limit and is unzoned, and the petitioner has requested annexation and a zoning designation of R4 multifamily residential if the property is annexed, and whereas a public hearing on the proposed zoning was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on November 18, 2010, and whereas the City of Prattville Planning Commission did recommend the zoning of said property to R4 upon annexation, be therefore resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, that a public hearing is set for January 4, 2011, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers at City Hall. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. And we vote on, straight vote, okay. All in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and this resolution is passed. Mr. Wood, would you please introduce the ordinance?
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, Alabama, adopted on February 10, 1950, subsequently amended from time to time, and the zoning map adopted on the first day of May 1987, is hereby amended to classify the property described in attachment A and displayed in attachment B to R4, that the amendments herein contained were considered and recommended for approval by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on November 18, 2010, that this proposed ordinance was advertised for two weeks in the Prattville Progress and newspaper of general circulation within the city limits of the City of Prattville, and that the City Council of the City of Prattville shall at its public hearing on the fourth day of January 2011 at 6:00 p.m. at Prattville City Hall, consider said proposed ordinance, and all persons who desire shall have an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance, that all other items and provisions of the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville not herein specifically amended shall remain in full force and effect, that this ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Wood. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. By point of order, the proposed ordinance will hold over until our public hearing on January 4. Item Number Nine, a resolution to set a public hearing to zone property located on Covered Bridge Parkway to R4. Councilman Gillespie, can you introduce this one, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas AMB Properties Two, LLC is the owner of the property described in attachment A and shown in attachment B, whereas the property B zone is located on Covered Bridge Parkway, whereas the subject property is currently outside the city limits and is unzoned, and the petitioner has requested annexation and zoning designation of R4 multifamily residential the property is annexed. Whereas a public hearing on the proposed zoning was held by the Prattville Planning Commission November 18, 2010, whereas the City of Prattville Planning Commission did recommend the zoning of said property to R4, be therefore resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, that a public hearing is set for January 4, 2011, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers at City Hall. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Gillespie. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. All, all in favor of this resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, and the resolution is adopted. Councilman Gillespie, would you introduce the ordinance?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, zoning ordinance, excuse me, that the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, Alabama, adopted on February 10, 1950, subsequently amended from time to time, and the zoning map adopted on the first day of May 1987, is hereby amended to classify the property described in attachment A and displayed in attachment B to R4, but the amendments herein contained were considered and recommended by, and recommended for approval by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on November 18, 2010. This proposed ordinance was advertised for two weeks in the Prattville Progress, a newspaper of general circulation within the city limits of the City of Prattville, and that the City Council of the City of Prattville shall at its public hearing on the fourth day of January 2011, at 6:00 p.m. at Prattville City Hall, consider this proposed ordinance, and all persons who desire shall have an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance, that all other items and provisions of the zoning ordinance in the City of Prattville are not herein specifically amended shall remain in full force and effect. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Gillespie. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. By point of order, the proposed ordinance will hold over until the public hearing on January the 4th. Item Number Ten, a resolution to set a public hearing to zone property located at Old Ridge Road to R3 and R5. Councilman Fink, would you introduce this resolution, please?
Do we have to, David, for point of privilege, do we have to read this whole thing, or can we just do the title, because they're exactly the same on each of these?
On the resolution or the?
Both. Resolution and ordinance. To set the public hearing. Can I just simply read the title?
You can, sure. I mean, that's.
Because they're the same on all of them.
Mm-hmm. No, I mean, you, you can introduce them and pass them just by acknowledging what they say. That's perfectly all right.
Resolution to set a public hearing to zone property located at Old Ridge Road to R3 and R5. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Renninger. All in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Chair votes aye, the resolution is adopted. Councilman Fink, would you introduce the ordinance?
Read this one, okay. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, as follows, that the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, Alabama, adopted on February 10, 1950, subsequently amended from time to time, and the zoning map adopted on the first day of May 1987, is hereby amended to classify the property described in attachment A and displayed in attachment B to R3 and R5, that the amendments herein contained were considered and recommended for approval by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on November 18, 2010, that this proposed ordinance was advertised for two weeks in the Prattville Progress, a newspaper of general circulation within the city limits of the City of Prattville, and that the City Council of the City of Prattville shall at its public hearing on the fourth day of January 2011, at 6:00 p.m. at Prattville City Hall, consider this proposed ordinance, and all persons who desire shall have an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance, that all other items and provisions of the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville not herein specifically amended shall remain in full force and effect. This ordinance shall take, shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law. So moved.
Moved by Councilman Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. By point of order, this ordinance will also hold over until the public hearing on January 4th. Item Number Eleven, an ordinance for the petition of, for annexation of 549 Covered Bridge Parkway and Covered Bridge Parkway. Councilman Bowles, could you introduce this ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that the City of Prattville is a city of the population of 6,000 inhabitants located in the state of Alabama, and that it is being, being presented by a petition by all owners of property located and contained, which are continuous to the corporate limits of the City of Prattville as they are now situated, and that the property described in the petition sought to be annexed is a, described in attachment A and shown in attachment B, and that said property does not lie within the corporate limits of any other municipalities, and that all owners, as defined in 11-42-20 Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, have executed said petition required for the property to be annexed into the City of Prattville, and that the City of Prattville finds that it is in the best interest, interest of the City of Prattville and that it, and its inhabitants to annex said property, and that the City Council of the City of Prattville finds that the petition has met all requirements of Title 11-42-20 through 11-42-23 Code of Alabama, as amended. Be it further ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that the corporate limits of the City of Prattville be extended and rearranged so as embraced and include the following properties, as described in attachment A and shown in attachment B, and that which, that which property shall be, become a part of the corporate area of Prattville, Alabama, upon passage of this, publication of this ordinance as required by law. Be it further ordained that the extension of the sewer line in the newly annexed areas shall not be provided until such time as it becomes economically, economically feasible for the City of Prattville to provide the same. Be it further ordained that a copy of the petition be filed in the office of Judge of Probate of Ataga County, Alabama, and that this ordinance be published in Prattville Progress of Ataga County, Alabama. I so move.
Moved by Councilman Bowles. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. By point of order, order, this ordinance will hold for two weeks unless there's a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Fink. Is there a second on the motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of the motion to suspend the rules, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
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 Chair votes nay, and the rules are not suspended. Ordinance Number Twelve, item Number Twelve, ordinance, petition for annexation of Old Ridge Road between River Chase North, North and Pendlebrook subdivisions. Councilman Argo, would you introduce this ordinance, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that the City of Prattville is a city with a population of over 6,000 inhabitants located in the state of Alabama, and that it has been presented by petition by owners of property located and contained, which are contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Prattville as they are now situated, and that the property described in the petition sought to be annexed is as described in attachment A and shown in attachment B, and that said property does not lie within the corporate limits of any other municipality, and that all owners, as defined by 11-42-20 Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, have executed said petition requesting the property be annexed into the City of Prattville, and that the City of Prattville finds that it is to the best interest of the City of Prattville and its inhabitants to annex said property, and that the City Council of the City of Prattville finds that the petition has met all requirements of Title 11-42-20 through 11-42-23 Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Be it further ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that the corporate limits of the City of Prattville be extended and rearranged so as to embrace and include the following property as described in attachment A and shown in attachment B, and that which property shall become a part of the corporate area of Prattville, Alabama, upon passage and publication of this ordinance as required by law. Be it further ordained that the extension of sewer lines in the newly annexed areas shall not be provided until such time as it becomes economically feasible for the city to provide same. Be it further ordained that a copy of the petition be filed in the office of the Judge of Probate of Ataga County, Alabama, and that this ordinance be published in the Prattville Progress of Ataga County, Alabama. Mr. President, I so move.
Moved by Councilman Argo. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Gillespie. By point of order, this ordinance also will hold for two weeks unless there's a motion to suspend the rules. Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All in favor of the motion to suspend the rules, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
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 Chair votes nay, and the rules are not suspended. Is there anything to come from the floor? Do we, do we do comments now? Is this where we go down the?
Well, actually, a motion to adjourn is not debatable either, so you have to take that motion if he's sincerely offering it.
All right, I guess it's time for you, Mayor, if you have any closing comments.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As a person who was president of the council for several years, I'm sure Mr. Wood and Mr. Argo would agree, I have to congratulate you. This was your first full meeting as the president of the council. Twelve items, no budget, five suspensions of the rules, two resolutions with attorneys sitting in the audience watching your every move, opposing attorneys, three re-zonings and two annexations. And a partridge in a pear tree. And I have to say that on your first meeting, I think you've done exceptionally well this evening, and I look forward to continuing to work with you. And congratulations, Mr. President, Pro Tem, Pro Gillespie. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, and I appreciate those kind words. Councilman Gillespie?
Yes, sir. I also wanted to compliment you on running the other show here, and we're all gonna get better at it. But also, I want to just, point of privilege here, is that I just want to mention something about my father. He would have been 79 years old today, and I still miss him, still think a lot about him, and just want to tell him happy birthday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gillespie. Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I must be getting old, because I served with Councilman Gillespie's father. And it's been an honor, and congratulations on being appointed as President Pro Tem. Also, Mr. President, I want to take this opportunity to tell you thank you for the information that you've been providing, the leadership, and that we've had some constituents out tonight that asked about where we were, and you've given information concerning revenue, expenses, the type of gap that we have, even meeting with department heads, and what we need to look at as far as reserve, is just a lot of different particulars, and he has provided that information. I just wanted to share that with, with the public, and hopefully, we can get to a point where we can pass a budget. So, I thank you, and I appreciate that, and you're doing good. Just keep up, keep up the good work. All of you guys doing good, and all, you all do good for coming. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, thank you. I would like to say to Councilman Gillespie, congratulations on becoming president pro tem. I hope he knows he's a good friend of mine, and my vote in no way was an indication of how I feel about him as a person. And I look forward to serving with him as pro tem. I know he'll do an outstanding job. And, Mr. President, as I've indicated to you in several emails lately, I'm very proud of the way that you're leading this council. You've done an outstanding job, especially in this budget crunch, and I appreciate the fact that you're being so diligent and so careful, and I thank you for that, as, not only as a council member, but also as a taxpayer. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Argo. Councilman Renninger?
Well, if I knew we were going to have a love fest tonight, I'd have brought my guitar, and we could all circle up and sing kumbaya. Good night.
Thank you, Councilman Renninger. Councilman Bowles?
Mr. Quig, congratulations, Bill. Tom, you're doing a great job.
Thank you. Councilman Fink?
(Inaudible).
Second.
So I don't get to say anything?
Correct.[1736.33][1736.33](Laughter).
Do I hear a second?
Second.